Here.
Here.
Melon?
Here.
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 Okay, number two, approval agenda.
Changes.
Yes, there are changes. Under number three, we're gonna make a few changes. We're gonna make A is presentate from Audrey Corey at YSS. B will be Gabe Bowers, life insurance carrier options. And we'll make a public hearing. C and resolution, I think that would be P. In addition to that, to go under resolutions, on your copy it shows, under number two, twenty-one twelve, the wage meter labor. That's not posted twenty-four hours in advance, so I have to acknowledge that's on. Is that it? An honor?
Yes.
I don't know. This will be a pool. All roll.
Rusty, Melon?
Yes.
Here.
Yes.
Hippon?
Yes.
Maxton?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Kimison?
Yes.
Okay, number three, Audrey Corey at YSS.
Okay, can you guys hear me or don't you hear me? I've never had a problem being heard before, so... Okay, I'm Audrey, I'm the site supervisor for Kids Club, which is, excuse me, a before and after school program that's provided by Youth and Shelter Services here in town. Our mission is to provide a safe nurturing environment for all of the kids that we serve. And we serve kids from grades kindergarten through sixth grade. And we're open before school from six-thirty to eight, and then after school from three until six. And that also includes early outs, and no school days for teacher in-service, and no school days for winter break, and all that good stuff. And our main goal is to make Kids Club affordable for all of our families. So we have a sliding fee scale that we offer. There's three different levels, and we've kind of shown, seen the importance of that this last year. We have over fifty percent of our families that are taking advantage of this sliding fee scale. So we kind of are really proud of our, you know, the opportunity to be able to offer this to families. Our funding is supported by United Way, Story County DCAT, and the Youth and Shelter Services Foundation to provide this sliding fee scale for our families, along with the activities we have for kids, field trips, et cetera, et cetera. We provide, our main purpose for Kids Club is to provide a safe environment for our kids. We also try to also provide an educational environment for kids. So our kids every month take part in a decision of what our theme is going to be for the month coming up. So last month we learned about the desert, we learned about dinosaurs. One of our kids wants to learn about the president, so we'll be doing that in the near future. So all kinds of, a huge range of ideas here for our themes that we have. We know that thirty percent of kids go, thirty-two percent of kids go home by themselves after school, and then that equals up to over eight hours of being by themselves after school. So we try to provide that environment for kids, and try to make it possible for everyone to come be a part of our program. Our program provides a healthy snack, we provide recess time, we provide homework and reading time, and then we do activities, and we call them team meetings, where we just kind of sit down and talk about what our theme is that month. So I'm here tonight to invite you to our open house that we're having. It's called Lights On. Lights On is a nationwide event that takes place in October every year, and the point of it is to shine a light on after-school programs. So I think it's been going on about fifteen years. Yeah, I think this is the fifteenth year. So we try to celebrate that every year. So this year, our kids are going to be putting together an open house. They'll be doing a skit, they'll be deciding on the menu, they won't be making dinner, but they'll be deciding what someone else is going to make for them. They are coming up with ideas for activities, they are coming up with decorations, and all that good stuff. So I have invitations here for all of you to take home, and I can take any questions now that you might have about our program, or Lights On in general. And I also have my contact information down here as well, if you'd like more information. So, any questions?
Is that your round program?
Yep, yep, we do before and after school, and then in the summertime, we're open from six-thirty in the morning until six PM. And then during the summer, we also have, we have a summer theme instead of just a monthly theme. So last summer it was the rainforest, so we went, and we also go on field trips every day, too. So we go, we went like to the Botanical Center to kind of focus in on that rainforest aspect. We went to the zoo, and different places like that.
Do you get people to pay for those though, don't you? Those field trips?
Yeah, we, a lot of them-
The sponsors, I'm gonna say that.
Right.
Sponsors of the field trips.
Right, a lot of our field trips are funded by different businesses, and like there's a few businesses in town who will say, here's the money to go to the zoo with, or here's the money to do this with. And so we do have a lot of very generous donors that provide money for us to do that kind of stuff. But then our field trips, like the pool and that kind of thing, we use the funds that parents, our parents pay for those kinds of things. Okay? Any other questions?
During the summer, my school's not in session. I presume you have more of a staff helping you?
Yes, I don't do it by myself. I have, let's see, I think I have four staff. Yeah, four staff under me that work for, they're college students that come over, and they work with me now, and then in the summertime, we also hire them to work during the entire day. So we're open from six-thirty to six, but our staff is generally there about six hours. We try to keep them there for six hours.
You have two shifts, you're saying, right?
Yeah, yeah, we kind of mix it up between, you know, someone will work mid-morning to mid-afternoon shift and that kind of thing, but yeah, we try to keep it like a split day kind of deal. We're up staff.
I guess, what's the age limit?
For our kids?
Yeah.
Well, in the summertime, they have to have completed kindergarten. But for our school time, I'm sorry, our school year program, if their first day of kindergarten, they can come to Kids Club. So this year, I think we have ten kindergartners that are-
Year-fuel.
Sorry, you can't join us?
Any other questions?
Okay, thank you very much for this handout. Kevin, you wanna grab those invitations?
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, next up, Gabe Bowers, life insurance carrier options.
Mr. Mayor, Councilor, it's Stephen, thank you for allowing me to be here. I'm gonna be real brief, just wanna give you an update where we have been, where we are, and plan to be here in a couple weeks, but just wanted a little bit of guidance from you all, and then we'll be back asking for a formal decision. Real quickly, I think you're handing out a sheet as far as where the life insurance is at, primarily talking about the life insurance that is provided by the city to all employees. Now, there is voluntary products alongside of it. We've known we're gonna be looking at the prices, the renewal is right now, it was actually October first for the Fort Dearborn. Real quickly, we've taken the products out to market, and Luke and Andrea, myself and Renee, Renee, my counterpart, sat down here about a week ago, and knew, and know that we do certainly have some options, but we didn't have everything pulled together enough to be here tonight for a formal decision, so I just wanted to let you know what we're doing. The Fort Dearborn price, it's about fifty-six hundred dollars a year that the city pays in premium. Mutual Omaha for exactly the same coverage, the base coverage that's offered to all employees, which is twenty-five thousand of coverage for each employee. Comes in about thirty-one hundred dollars, so it's about a forty-five percent savings. It probably makes sense to look at, but really, I'm here tonight just to see if there's any immediate concerns or questions that you'd like us to address. If there isn't, we'll pull together full packets and be back here in two weeks, for our October fifteenth meeting, looking for direction as to if you'd like to stay with Fort Dearborn, or move to Mutual Omaha for the premium savings. Side note is, we do feel that there will be a lot better communication between our offices and Mutual Omaha. Fort Dearborn's gone through a lot of changes over the last couple of years. They used to be one and the same with Blue Cross, and they're not any longer, and we do have some service issues when it comes time to ask, you know, ask or answer questions from the, on the city's perspective, or on their, on your behalf.
It's for full by employees, right?
That's correct. And the voluntary products, for any employees that are electing volunteer products, would also switch to Mutual Omaha for the identical premium, they've simply matched the premium.
What's voluntary, correct?
I'm sorry, if, sure-
It sounds like an insurance thing.
Shame on you.
Red Jacks.
Simply, when we went to Fort Dearborn, the employees could buy up to eighty thousand of their own individual coverage, no questions asked. It'll be very similar to that, they'll actually be identical to that with Mutual Omaha. The only exclusion is they can actually buy up to a hundred thousand, no questions asked if they wanted to, but they could elect any increment up to that. And that's all employee paid, so no obligation on the city's side for that. Questions or other information I can give?
And we anticipate that based on the reactions, if there's no objections or concern, we'll likely have a contract, and a resolution will come forward on the next council agenda for action.
Thank you, and our intention, if we're able to do that, is we'll go ahead and give the, Mutual Omaha, the intention that we're probably going to go that route. They'll provide packets and get everything ready, that takes about five days, and we'd like to implement it by November first, to go ahead and get the savings started with you guys. Again, that's why I just wanted to at least bring it up to you guys, with Luke and I talked over the last couple of days, thought it'd be a good idea to keep you informed versus coming next week, or excuse me, in two weeks, and say we need an immediate decision. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Hey, next up, public hearing for the sale of nine-twenty-one thirteenth street. Are there any other comments? Any other comments? If not, this public hearing is closed. B, twenty-one eleven, resolution accepted, offer to buy at nine-twenty-one thirteenth street.
I talked with Beth this morning, she has spent quite a bit of time working with the realtors. If you recall, this was for the sale of property as part of the NSP program, and council's action was to approve moving port of the sale, as long as the total loss would be fourteen thousand five hundred worth of loss. And they did confirm, they went through those numbers, and even the realtors came forward and gave up some of the commissions as part of helping make it through. So I thought that was something that certainly they should recognize. So it's a good thing for them to recognize the program, and I think the only other thing to happen right now is for appraisal, and as long as the appraisal goes relatively normal, then the settlement will go forward. Concerned questions, Beth, if you have any?
Any comments? Motion to approve?
Second.
All roll.
Melon?
Yes.
Here.
Yes.
Hippon?
Yes.
Maxton?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Kimison?
Yes.
Rusty?
Next up, report of standing committees, A, policy administration, Sherry. Public safety and transportation committee, Stephen.
Just one thing, I think most of you got email on our public safety meeting, they had me re-authorized, United Way signs me right away, because I have just something the council decided. You know, it's making space, so if you get called, that's a decision.
Don't call me.
That's it. Okay. Utility committee, Gary.
No report.
Yeah, economic development committee, Stephen.
No reports, that's all.
Okay. Uh, to reply to department reports, building official, Dan Higgins? Not there. Library, Barb?
No report, Your Honor.
Finance officer, Andrea.
Um, no, well, no report, but I can have one thing to say. Um, we did talk about how we're gonna cover that fourteen thousand nine hundred dollars. We're gonna use part of these hundred thousand dollars from the tip, right, that you gave, you set two different hundred thousand dollars to do demolition. One of them to do the Story Street, and then another hundred thousand for future demolitions. We're gonna use part of that second hundred thousand dollars to cover that fourteen thousand five hundred, and then as we sell the other homes, if we sell those for profit, that money will go towards demolition to reclaim that fourteen thousand five hundred. Else's questions?
Thank you.
Do you need an option for that?
Okay, city attorney, Jim Robbins, it's not my crackle, but I'd like to welcome my new city attorney.
Thank you.
What have you? I think you got a report right away tonight.
I do, as well.
You did?
Yes. I met with Alan last week, and he went through all of the pending matters, and he did it professionally, and him and I have had a smooth transition, so I think I'm up to speed as far as what he, he was handling, but there are other matters, and I need to be aware of what meetings I need to attend, or things I need to participate in, I welcome the communication or the request to do so. So, other than that, I have no further report.
Thank you, welcome aboard. Next up, economic development, Director Beth. Okay, Director Parks and Public Reports, Jan Ross.
I've got a couple things, sorry. The resolution they have in the, is for new employees that I hired Cameron Stevens, currently retired, who is whaling, Andrew's up to foreman, and so we hired Cameron as a first of October. And the interview process, Whalen, myself, great kid, he's been working with us three and a half years, and he's pretty much in the ground, and so he's very good. Flush hydrants right now, so we see water, we do dirty water calls, that's what we're doing right now, with flush hydrants, to, for our hydrant maintenance. Street workers out, leave the drop, and we're gonna keep it out as long as we can. Van lives in the cemetery, you guys seen it, heard about it. We have some businesses and some individuals stepping up, so now the reward's up to eighteen hundred dollars. So people are starting, it really stirred a lot of promotion when they did this, so we're getting a lot of people stepping up at all. Police is working really hard on trying to invest in and get, get the help, so give kudos to those guys. Also, kudos to French on staff out there, they're really working hard to get, go in, answer all the questions, I mean, you get a lot of people calling, my stone's okay, this, that, and they're really doing well out there. There's street companies, a big thank you to these guys, it's Hartland Monument for Longmont, Kaylin Johnson Monument for Fort Dodge, and the Bay Monument, they're coming over, they're here today, and they're setting a ball, just going to stuff it free. So they're really doing their best out of, because it's about two-hundred to two-hundred-and-fifty bucks a pop, except the other, depends on the size of the wood, so. We're still trying to get hard numbers on what the actual damage is, because they bust a lot of older firms, and it's hard to put a price on them, because you can't get them anymore. And then plus, you know, that basis by dead stones, we're going through a bunch that we're missing. So we gotta do a count on all of those and see what's all happening there. They're about two-hundred bucks a pop, too, so it's, it's gonna be pretty, a pretty big number, so just wanted to do a heads up on that. That's all, yeah? Any questions?
Any work for insurance?
I talked to Hans, he says most of the homeowners, most of the people that own a stone, they're covered as if they're homeowner's insurance. Now, that's even generations down, it's sort of a hard one to sort of understand, but it's, like if you and I were brothers, and our mothers and our grandparents are out there, and their stone was damaged, it would come clear down to us for our homeowner's insurance to fix. But if we can't find anybody, then we'll have to use our insurance to probably take care of it. There's only like, I guess, I don't know, I'm sure like ten or eleven of them that are actually damaged, definitely just knocked over and moved or thrown. But as, as the, the bases and stuff like that will happen, I step up a little bit.
John, that wasn't up there, what, what area was this, or was it-
It's throughout the whole, it's like a swath, about forty yards wide, all the way through the cemetery. It's almost like the health of trees, yeah? So that way you can- So, yeah, like the bike trail, rec trail was their access point, you know, it's dark there, easy in and out, I think, but it is, it's, it's widespread.
Somebody, uh, stole a pit over.
There were seventy-two stones actually in urns knocked over, now the bases, we just found, we just sort of stumbled across that, so we're, we're gonna count, and then it's only basically, seventy-two stones and probably thirty-five, forty, those big concrete urns, stuff like that, about a hundred pieces of damage. We got photos of all of it, documentation and all that stuff.
Is it open now, so you can go in?
Yeah, it was open that next day, yep, yep.
I wondered if-
Is this something that we, you know, it seems like every time we have problems, we go, we get TV coverage, is this something that we should maybe have TV coverage to show how people are helping out?
We told them about the, we got them to yet, we told them about everyone stepping up, about the mining companies helping out for free and stuff, we sent out some press releases for all this stuff.
I'll talk to you afterwards, there's a gal from TV news that said she'd really like to, if there's some whatever come up, I think it's kind of like her personally. Not, I'm-
Uh, that's the one I talked to.
Okay, she was over here for this.
Yeah, I'll talk to her.
I mean, it'd be nice to get good-
I wonder how many people know that their household insurance covers?
That was a new one to me, too, that was from last time. It'll be something we'll have to just, a lot of people are calling to see if my stone's okay, just up in there, we're trying to get the price, you know, and that's it. Yeah. It wasn't a riot, there's actually a couple, it's not a riot, it is underneath your homeowner's insurance. And just so you know, Hans did, he attempted to call me, I was in a meeting, I couldn't get his call, but I have a feeling that's what he's calling about. He's entering into EMC, so they are aware, so if something comes down, that's-
So we do have coverage?
Yeah, we have some bracket umbrella for the parks, and that's under our insurance. All right?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, you told me, Super Senator Roy.
Yeah, I need permission to buy a moped. You really wanna do it? No. I just wanted to let the public be aware that we are checking on a crit. Councilman Malice wanted me to send one of my guys up in a moped and see what's going on there, so that's what the mopeds are. But we are checking on, we don't know if it's just from the drought situation, leaf, decomposing leaves.
The smell?
Yeah.
And just taking water.
Yeah, good, and I think it's all the way, either you go to an intake through the middle of town, you smell some things, right? But we are doing checking in, possibly doing some testing, so if Jim on the radio can say, you know, there is things that you should not be putting down, the storm drains and everything else, that's what we'll be looking for, if we get that moped.
The hydrant push, too, the water, that water goes into our storm, and it's gonna show a lot of that taking water down the drain, so that hydrant push will help.
And Bob said he'd only go with you if you went next. What's that? Bob will only go if you go with him. You got it right on the back. I want a two-wheel drive one, man.
Next up, city engineer, Wayne.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, yeah, I wonder my agenda, I'm covering Chief Gary, he's unavailable tonight. Last week, Chief Gary did receive proposals on the sod improvement project that we've been moving along with, handed out a report, council signed a copy of the proposal. Unfortunately, we only did receive one proposal on the project, so passed around a copy of that. The proposal we received was some RA three ball instructions, here are Boone. If you open it up, that second page has the prices called out for different base bid and alternatives. With this sign, we're coming up for computerized drawings and getting the field work for some thousand dollars. And then you see the different alternatives in the base bid, starting at a hundred ninety-four thousand, six hundred ninety on down, uh, to a hundred sixty-one thousand. So the number's been quite a bit higher than we were expecting, what we budgeted for. And talking with Ray Ball, that's a bit letting, it sounds like there was some confusion on the alternative, where we wanted the contractor to recreate it amongst some alternative designs, so he was willing to submit some clarifications on a bid, so that second sheet I handed out, there's some available options that they identified, where we could save some money, or lessen the cost of the project. So this would be, this would bring down a hundred twenty-three thousand nine hundred sixty-four dollars, with the city doing some additional work on their own, going out and getting lettering for the sod, doing the additional painting, so this wouldn't be the full cost of the project, it's just a portion of the project that they would be performing. Being the city's, well, we're looking at it, I think Luke, you were talking with Andrea, you could have some discussion on that?
Yeah, and Andrea, I contacted her while we were on, she came up with a couple of primary options. I believe one was to use a portion of the principal funds from the Royal Trust, and also potentially some reserves from local options satisfied.
How much do we have to land on the great garden?
And I think you-
And that's pretty, we're confused on what we need.
And did you mention that is something that ultimately has to be approved by the executive or, or executive or whatever?
It's Ben or lawyer, but, uh, that's approved now.
About our reserves.
Well, lots of things on tax reserves. Um, we're right at, I think, the twenty-five percent. So if we dip in and add, we're dipping that policy that we've set.
Some of the cost savings identified would be taking limestone out of the project, some confusion was bidders still about limestone was required on doorways, well, limestone would be taken out of the project, would be split pavement block or brick on the project, no precast concrete, no limestone, just different colors of the block and the brick, and then of course, the windows. There was no bid on the alternative to remove the south roof window on Story Street, and do an alternative there, and there's no bid on established locations, they didn't see good on ourselves. Chief Gary said that he had no particular recommendation on this, he said he would do it up comfortable and forward, however the council decided. Two obvious options would be to order the, the better with this alternative number, move forward with that. Another alternative would be, if we only got one bidder, that makes certain there is actually hired an architect. We could work it down, maybe develop some cost savings, you know, through that process, and develop a traditional bid package, and then swap a bit of that, and try to get more bidders that way. But that, I'm here just to provide some information and discuss.
I think our intention, though, was hopefully to get this done in time to be done, and we start going back out for architect drawings, and starting all over again with that. I look at thirty-seven and five, and I wonder, is that really worth it on some of this stuff for us to try to, are we gonna bid that out, or have our own people do it? Those items.
Yeah, the main items-
I think a lot of the savings there would be, the items the city would take care of are the city, or Boone Police Department lettering, because that's something that gray ball, they wouldn't do that themselves, they would hire another person to do that, or another company sold, and then they might mark it up, so we could be saving, we could be saving market cost there. Some of the savings is taken out of limestone, I think that was substantial cost, but things still be covered would be the signage, the painting, some of the back work on the inside, handrail. And then if the project does carry, and we're, we're really cold, and they need a tent site heated, that's also a different cost. So you're right, it's not ever, this isn't necessarily savings entirely, it's still cost to be cured, move forward with this.
I'm gonna ask it, why is it so much higher than the bid we were given?
Yeah, we've had a lot of discussion, we met last year, I believe, and Luke corrected them wrong, we did get a quote for doing the work from a local contractor. It sounds like there was a misunderstanding, apparently the price for work that we received was for only doing brick sod for a certain elevation, I'm thinking ten or twelve feet high, whereas packages went out, but for is redoing the full height of sod, actually extending sod height on one side, to make it even. So it sounds like the, the budget number didn't match, we actually went out and put a bid.
Well, there's two, there's two things on here that I know we specifically asked for, or I, I think some of the understanding did, and that was to remove those windows on that sod, and I'm very adamant about that, because I'm really concerned what it's gonna be in ten years' time, so I think that's a very important issue. The other thing is, I think we asked for what it would be if it wasn't, like a brick or stone, go all the way up, if there was something else to be done, not even, but if it was steel, or whatever. Because I can't help but believe, by doing something on above, and not laying brick all the way up, that there wouldn't be a tremendous savings. And I, I also have concern, if you do lay brick all the way up like that, what are you gonna set that on? Because there is really a good base to set that on. Because there is really a good pace to set that on.
So we, um, both were addressing this, correct, with both?
They were supposed to be.
Right. So this is the big alternative, a re-linement, stop removing those, that's where we, we got no bid on that one? Okay, I'm just, I didn't know what you're saying, that we didn't try to get that.
No, no, what I'm saying is, it doesn't include that, and I, I really struggle with, I'm in a position where it doesn't go anywhere because I think it's gonna be a real an issue in the, in the long term. Might look really nice, but we have to worry about what it's gonna cost 10 years or not, or five years, if the windows start getting cracked or broke, or whatever it might be.
We've discussed that, you know, a big concern is a break, so we're trying to look at a break. Uh, so a break, I believe, this alternative design, a break is only right on the windows, it wouldn't, uh, extend all the way up. But I'm not sure, and that's, that's part of the problem is we're not, everything's kinda muddy, everything's not real clear. You know, on traditional packages, we create a big bag and full height, and it's just much brick and as much block, so now they kind of just went out and said, give us some options, so everything's kinda a little vague, and, you know, on this package, that may be why we only have one bid as well.
What, what will it cost us if we do hire an architect approximately?
We have a concept in place, that shouldn't really have caused, uh, I think Luke and I have discussed the major 500,000 dollars. We haven't gone out and asked anybody if a quote happens.
What if, what if we give them our, what if we give them our downtown guidelines for brick? What if we give them our downtown guidelines for brick and said, this is our outline specs?
Gave a designer that, but a designer that information. I would still prefer designers gonna come up with, we wanna use this exact brick and this exact block, matching how the specs, cause that just helps us in a cost beforehand, and then we know what budget is.
Are, are you talking about going back to this company, correct?
No.
Oh.
No, I'm just saying, if we cut down, if we give them specifics on a bid proposal instead of starting to crack again.
I think the fact that we've gone through, we've gone through generations of bringing forward these pictures and concepts, that will keep costs down, cause they're not starting to scratch and say, what do you guys like? Do you like this, do you like that? We know what we like, we like this one, but we also wanna look at options of reducing costs. That should help keep the design cost down.
You know, Father, Wayne said, this is bad, there might be a, a lot of cost overruns on this that, uh, jump up at us and have orders, and if we have it in black and white, that we have it supposed to be done, then we shouldn't be any problem.
That's a gal's concern.
You know, same as I know, we've already started this process, I don't, just keep going, I don't like that down there, I wanna get some more.
Yeah, but we wanna work with, and we, you know, we wanna just, you know, get crazy and just get it done.
Wayne, what do you think we should do?
Well, I think, I'm more comfortable with the traditional package of having a bid package set up where we know what we're getting from, from the beginning. Uh, the concern with starting over is, and Luke mentioned this, we might go through that whole process of having a designer, still end up with the same number when we come back. Then we spent six weeks and some time we've ended up over at right now.
I guess that's, that's kinda what leads me is, uh, if we were gonna bid that way, and we put it out to bid, and we had one person bid it, they had all the options here. Sometimes when you start going back and, and then at times, somebody says, well, I'm not gonna bid on the project this time, cause they'll just-
It concerns me that we only had one bidder, we did have three bidders show up for, to a pre-bid meeting, and I don't know if we're fact back, concerned that the way we went out to bid this, and they scared off some people, just because we didn't know exactly what we wanted, and it's hard for people to deliver to the client when they don't exactly know what they want.
So then really, we're in a position where we need to rebid.
What was that, Steve?
We're really in a position that we need to put it back up. The one concern that Wayne brought up about going up for a rebid is, we're going to have to make sure that Jim is comfortable that whatever this rebid looks like is substantially different than what we put out the first time.
I, I wonder if we should, um, because we had one contractor, and you can look at that two ways, the glass half full, half empty. Uh, we had one contractor who did put a lot of time on it. I, I don't think that we should go with 123,000 plus the other things that we have to do. But if it would be wise to sit down one last time with them and, and see if there's anything that we can negotiate, or if they could come up with some ideas to get it down closer to where the original budget is, where we don't have to do a lot of things involved. Cause I agree with you, when we have to start doing things, it gets very expensive.
Well, I think, but even what you're saying, is we'd sit down with, with Redwater, we'd say, okay, personally cut this down and just sit down and negotiate and do it.
Just see where it comes out, and if it doesn't, if we can't get it to where we think we should be, then we have to look at the option of going on rebid.
I certainly need more comfort with that.
And that, and that could be done, you know, in the very near future, and that way we can move along. And I'm not saying to sign the contract with Ray Ball, that's not at all what I'm saying, I'm just saying, you can sit down and, and try to negotiate, or maybe not even negotiate, try to see what can be done. And I know you said you've done some of that already, but maybe try one last chance to see.
Basically, if here's, here's what we got budgeted, what are we gonna do with that?
Going back to, we had it in black and white, and it never fails, we have, coming back to the house, it's just a normal thing anymore. And, uh, without it, you know, like you said, it's a problem. That was, because that opens up the door.
It's more common than not for projects, and that's kinda really bad, I mean, something you do not know until you get into it. We've probably limited that on those projects since we've begun it, we've removed the facade, so that should let us hum those concerns, the overruns, we know, we've exposed it, we know what we have, that should help. Uh, Gary, do you have a few, I'm sorry to answer that question, um, Ray Ball did address how they would construct that, and I think they have to pick out part of that sidewalk and create a new foundation, let this side move on.
I, I agree with Nick though, we've got all this debate items here, that we don't know what the cost here is. I mean, that's, that's basically-
Well, we know, we know right now that those are 37,552, I mean-
Or, or?
Probably more.
Or more?
Well, that's a, the-
Yeah, the bid, but I mean, if we have to go out piecemeal it out, or-
For the offers.
And that's, then when you start doing that, you know, we're not in business to try to do that, we're in business to try to make-
I don't want us to see subcontractors and have to go out and get all these people lined up, and gotta go get a painter to do this, and go get somebody else to do this, somebody else.
So, is this maybe something you guys could get that through this event? Well, just gonna say, might I suggest that, number one, we're gonna wanna make sure that Jim's comfortable with, with this concept of moving forward, and he hasn't had a lot of chance of, it's certainly putting him on the spot, asking for anything right now. But for this number one item, 1.0 on this page, right here, I mean, it says the bid item, some food all labor material, equipment necessary for creation of viable alternatives, there's a bid amount of $1,000. Potentially what we could do is start, we could move forward item number one, and before the next council meeting, uh, we can work with Eric Hearn with very low construction and come back at the next meeting with some alternatives that could be presented to council and those associated modification costs.
I'd still like to see those ones gone on the south. Sometimes you said, Bonnie, you can go with our Bonnie deal.
That would be one, that would be one of the options that they would create of, of kinds of contracts for.
Yeah, and again, I would say that, acting with council, that would be contingent upon, uh, Jim being able to take a good look at this and advise us accordingly. And then I would say, Eric, would you be comfortable with that?
Sure.
I may march. Work with, uh, Ray Ball instructions on time that it is cost, maybe do it in 65, 70.
Call the roll.
Yes?
Yes.
Good luck?
Yes.
Nice job?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Do it though?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Sound?
Yes.
Okay, next up, director of public safety, Bill is not here this evening, so Commander Smutter is filling in.
Yes. I do, actually, I just wanted to follow up on what Mr. Rouse was saying as far as the investigation. Uh, we did have, uh, one email tip come in today, and it was, I call them third-party tips. So it's over, heard someone talking at the store, and heard this, and, and they may have heard that, kind of thing, so nothing hard and fast as far as tips go. Uh, not that that's not important, cause certainly all tips we've followed up on and discussed. Also spoke to Chief today, and, uh, he said to make sure that Cory Rose and Detective Mace had their calendars totally cleared and devote all time and energies to this particular investigation, so, their calendars have officially been cleared, and, uh, that they're gonna make this their priority, and whether it, we have a tip come in, certainly, roughly $1,800, I know that would certainly loosen my tongue if I knew something about this. And, uh, so hopefully that hard and fast tip will come along, if not, uh, if not, certainly burning shoe leather is something the way things do seem solved, and, and certainly can still be now, so. But I just wanted to pass along that, uh, calendar's been cleared, it is a priority, and, uh, I tell you what, it, it's certainly got me, I, I don't understand those kinds of things. Cause the same people who go out and destroy things, if you destroy an item of theirs, they're the first one to run to the police and say, someone damaged my iPod or cell phone, they're the first ones to come in, so. Something I don't understand, but I did realize, you know, that that certainly is a priority for us, and, and we're gonna move forward. Thank you.
I have a question.
That, yes?
Yes.
I was just gonna address that. Uh, I don't know, he, maybe he was, he has on the agenda escort request for Army physical fitness test.
Yes, uh, we were contacted via email by a gentleman out at the, uh, Army National Guard for October 11th. They're doing their annual physical fitness, two miles starts at the guard, go through the old random meets, and then back out. Uh, they would like, an officer posted at first in Snetton, then also at the guard, and they would like them there fully admitted for a full hour. Uh, I did chat with him again, it was, it was via email, and let him know that in the past, we've, this is the first request we've gotten for various things, I'm thinking of the hospital, duathlon. Uh, they provide their own volunteers, uh, to make sure that their participants are safe. Uh, same way with the YMCA, who always has a, uh, 5K run over Puck Billy, they provide their own volunteers. Now certainly, uh, especially for the duathlon, we normally pull in, uh, Chief Peterson that Sunday, who drives around and just makes sure all cones are placed, and maybe that every, just physically that everything is fine, but they normally provide their own people for that, so that's something that we normally provide. I did let him know that it's time for minutes, I certainly had access to, uh, Mike Slotty, and also to Steve, and I had no problem with him being in the area. I just can't guarantee him being there the full hour without pulling someone in and saying, this is your job, you know? So, we're more than willing to help, I mean, cause we've helped others in the past, but as far as dedicating a person for an hour, uh, I haven't guaranteed, guaranteed anybody in the past, and I'm kinda hesitant to, uh, guarantee that for some in the future. But certainly, I did let him know that as, as time allows, I'll post Mike Slotty there and Steve Peterson, that's not a problem, and after them getting a priority call, it's kinda slim. So we certainly wanna help out as best we can, as far as guaranteeing that is, is not something we can do.
Alright. We don't need to take any action on-
What I was wondering is, could, uh, you know, and I understand, and I'm glad to hear that's substantial, I didn't wanna do it because you've got lots of things going, I know, more than normal, it seems like now. Is there any way that, uh, emergency management, that, so Vince could do something like that, that's right down there, Adam?
I, I can address that too, actually. When I emailed him back, this, this is something that, that the reserves have helped out with. Uh, I gave him the, the email address for Sergeant Linky, and also Zach, uh, Zoot Horse, both were in charge of, not only the reserve deputies, but search and rescue as well. And let him make, and I suspect with email I received back that he has not, he didn't contact him, he wants us to provide it. So that option was certainly, uh, certainly thrown out there for him.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, city administrator Luke.
Uh, yes, I have a few items, the first one is the, uh, Action Forum for Experience Works. Uh, there's some background on the program, and the city, this would be the second individual that the city could utilize, the first one is actually, um, our receptionist down at administrative offices, he's worked out, worked it out for us. Um, the alternatives of the program, the alternatives would be to report the program for part-time maintenance staff, improve the resolution, organize the proposal. Are there any questions about this program?
I have just one question I had going through, like, and I've worked with some of the programs, kinda like this, certainly this, the zeros that, uh, it's interesting, they're not employed by, uh, Experience Works, and they're not employed by us. If I read this right, going through here, who handles, like, the returns, the workers' comp, and the, our person, so on? Cause that commended our umbrella?
I, you know what, I, I don't know the answer to that better, but I can pump it down.
We're concrete and cover, that's a considered one here, um, I believe they also have insurance too.
I didn't find that out yet.
They're, they're good programs, I'm not, I'd be willing to program them all. Couple things that come up, I've asked.
Well, and that's actually a very good question, because the capacity that we utilize the staff right now is in receptionist position, but what we're talking about is somebody in front of maintenance capacity, where there is the potential, more likely potential of injury, so absolutely checking into that.
How long is that contract?
Maximum of 48 months. The other, uh, item that I commented about in here, preparing you for maybe potentially coming back in the future. I stated in here that, uh, this is certainly virtually no cost to the city, and when I say virtually no cost, the cost that we do infer is that we will ultimately do some training, that's the purpose of the program. So we spend some of our time, our staff time, training these folks how to do the job, uh, so while there's no physical headache. However, in the past, what we have done is we have dedicated some funds to help out the program. Uh, in the past, it was a $500 dedication towards Experience Works. And at some point in time in the future, I'm certainly not asking that now, not looking for a decision, uh, to be prepared in the future and make some kind of requests. Most, more specifically, if it works out, if it, if it works out well, is it asked for? And that item is actually in the consent agenda, are there any other questions for me? Okay, the next item that I have, um, the Boone Municipal League will be held October 23rd. Uh, that's a league of all the different communities and county, local governments here, I just live in Boone County. And we're planning, uh, October 23rd to meet, I believe, Felton Stevenson is hosting us up at the museum.
Yeah, we're gonna, it sounds like we're gonna have the dinner on the, in the dining cars, but stationary, not, not trip, and then probably through the museum.
Excellent, excellent, so that'll be, uh, that will be the program, uh, for the, the event. And that starts, I believe, at 6:30, you know, and you'll, we'll get a notice, and then ultimately it's the same thing, we'd like to know who's going, so we can sign everybody up. Uh, you're welcome to bring guests, although you will have to cover the cost of the meal for whoever your guest is, the city will cover your costs. Okay? Uh, the next item, and this is something that's gonna come up to policy administration, uh, but there's been some discussions about, uh, some type of a stipend in the future for council members. Uh, we attended the League of City Conference this past week, and a couple council members went along, and, um, I mentioned how many other elected officials from other communities saw logo shirts. And I maybe made a mistake, I don't know, of mentioning that to our elected officials that were there, so then they noticed it, and they said, yes, that would be nice. Even today, talking with Mayor Sly, he mentioned that that would be something nice. Uh, this ultimately would be something that would be paid to council members, and then you could then use those funds to purchase maybe a number of shirts. Along those same lines, um, we're looking at some modifications of our antivirus software, this is gonna seem like a jump, but it's same topic. And to the point where these laptops may go into use either elsewhere, or over time become a little bit outdated for what our needs are. We talked about, uh, including a stipend for a tablet-type computer. Uh, where that would be provided to a council member incoming, uh, for newly elected or re-elected, a certain dollar that would be set aside that you could use either to purchase a tablet- a certain dollar that would be set aside that you could use either to purchase a tablet, or that those dollars would ultimately come back to the city, they'll overcome the cost of paper copies, if that's how somebody still chooses to receive their information. So this is an item, we're gonna work up some kind of a general policy and bring it forward to policy administration.
We're talking about clothing allowance for council people now?
Uh, to some extent, yes, that would be a, a way to put it.
What kind of shirts are we gonna do?
Well, it would ultimately be up to you.
Oh.
Shirt, yes, but it would be city logo and, uh, something maybe.
I have a big construction on the back then.
They'll be green and yellow, Kevin.
It, it actually, it took all, I don't know, it's just that it, uh, there were a number of cities that had them. And, and do you have to? No. But, but like Luke and, and Greg and myself talked about, the number of times that one of us council people, any of us around this, this table, goes somewhere, whether it's at a, at a meeting like that, or whether we're attending a hearing here for something, or whether we're going to some kind of an opening or whatever, you know, uh, we're, we should be representing the city. And, um, I, I, I think it's a pretty nice touch.
Yeah.
I, I think it's a pretty special. And, and there are a lot of them now. There are a lot of cities that have, not just the Des Moines and the Iowa cities, but the communities that are our size, you know, sixty, ten, twelve thousand.
Can we just purchase those shirts?
You, you certainly could, yes.
But I have for the city to purchase the shirts for the council members that are going to those meetings? Or one for everybody with you?
Certainly.
Better than a stipend, I just think.
Then maybe all the city.
Well, part of the benefit of, of going down the route of more of a stipend is that essentially it's giving you the dollars you purchased it. They're your shirts. Ultimately, that's some kind of compensation to council. And Andre and I talked about it today, and then any action that would be taken now, ultimately would not be legal compensation until after the next election. It would come, of course, in our, your, your connection, right?
And we're not talking yearly thing, we're talking the one time stipend.
Right. We could check on that, just the clothing allowance part, or just for the shirts. Um, Andre and I did a little bit of research on that and see if that's something that could just be done now. Uh, but that wouldn't be a consideration down the road, to say, this is part of you becoming a council member. Here's dollars to be used towards any set of purposes.
It just seems like these could be discarded all at once, rather than have, uh, three or five, seven different orders.
If for right now that makes sense, um, as new council members come in, it would be a way then to address it if you have a new council member. And all, we'll bring it forward.
And what somewhat works best typically is, um, they individually go up, my shirts are taken, and, you know, local government is going to pay with the city local portion of it. Is that correct? Because I don't get a full bill of all of them, so they're kind of used to that, where they go and they wear stuff, which used to be intended to be.
I believe it's, people's heads too, they might do the shirts like. Any other comments, pressing that?
I got a couple of them, Phil, you see, see.
Go ahead, yes, we give up, I don't know about it. Greg, I think has been pretty dedicated. He seems to always have one on, whenever he goes, I'm even not a politician. Uh, the last, uh, the last item that I have, Lauren Appenzeller, he's, uh, he's been on the docket before for Forest Reserve. Uh, and I anticipate that, nothing has changed for his Forest Reserve program. That's been pretty consistent over the past couple, uh, past couple of years. So anticipate leaving the documentation for it. I just wanted to give the council a thought.
Okay, number six, consent agenda. Are there any items to the consent agenda you would like removed and discussed separately? They have not, and need a motion to remove. Okay, call the roll.
Kipba?
Yes.
Mashburn?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Rusty?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Okay, number seven, we have number eight. Uh, just a quick comment, I've had a lot of calls on the cemetery issue. And I spoke with Chief Scare, well, I told him that we need every available resource on this, and that's about here. Commander Sloder, you're that commitment, so. But, uh, a lot of calls, people are very upset, so. We will solve that, hopefully. Number nine, council member comments. Gary?
Yes, I have, uh, three items. Uh, first off, uh, I think it's really important that we recognize our city administrator. This is his five-year anniversary of being here at the city of Boone. And, uh, I just wanted to tell him that, uh, I appreciate what you do, what you've done for the city, and, uh, you being very straightforward, and, uh, thank you, and hope for you here another five or ten or fifteen or fifteen years, but, uh, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
We're here. Okay, secondly, uh, city engineer. I am on a committee, I was appointed to the committee of council here, uh, and the committee consists of the mayor, the city administrator, the finance officer, a private citizen, and two department heads. The committee basically is a search committee for the city of Boone, uh, to hire a city engineer. We've had several meetings, and we had a meeting last Tuesday, we know tomorrow. And it was consensus of the search committee for the city of Boone engineer to cease any further work in the hiring process of a city engineer due to the change in retirement plans with one of the city's department heads. And what that basically means is, because of the change, um, in the department heads, uh, if you remember the, the succession plan, and I know everyone's got one, and, and hopefully you remember it, it was kind of a pyramid situation, where it showed, where the engineer, uh, was going to, uh, take over. Okay, I, for the, sorry, no, you don't need to, no, you don't need to, that's fine. If there's questions off field, we'll have to include it. But basically, this city engineer was going to, uh, be in charge of a lot of the water plant details. And with the individual not going to retire, which we truly understand, we appreciate very much that, that he's gonna stay with us, that's a good thing. Uh, it doesn't make a lot of sense, so it is the consensus of the search committee to cease all further, um, movement on hiring an engineer. And I didn't take a motion at that point. All entertaining questions first.
Rick, so.
Yeah. Eric, if I might add as well, that, uh, if, if that ultimately is the direction the council goes, um, I would also want you to approve this part of the motion for us to immediately move forward and speak with both about continuing that contract.
Okay, I'll, I'll make the motion that, uh, that, uh, we, uh, cease any further movement on hiring an in-house city engineer. And along the same lines that, uh, this city administrator contacted, uh, both engineering, uh, to, to be able to continue operation, their operations in our city.
Okay, second. Call the roll.
Mashburn?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Rusty?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Kipba?
Yes.
One last item, uh, and, and it's things like this that, that makes me really feel proud to have, the public safety things that we have. I, I came up on an incident last night where both the police department and the fire department were involved. And to watch the professionalism, and watch how they work with each other, it just really makes you feel proud. Uh, I know you guys have worked hard in your departments, and, and tried to, you know, there's been some thresholds, and, and, you know, lots of things have gone on, but I'm gonna tell you what, when you, when, when I was able to see, and, and of course, it's always an unfortunate incident when you see this happen. But the way it was handled last night, I couldn't, couldn't say more better things than the way you're, you're handling it. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other council comments this evening?
Is there a ring on the door again?
Yes, tomorrow's nine thirty, and it is downtown here. Is anybody that can attend that?
Okay, uh, council comments?
Um, just an update from our In the Cities convention. A lot of good conferences, a lot of good breakout sessions. Uh, Luke did a couple ones with, uh, some other city administrators and elected officials, kind of brainstorming different ideas. I did a couple good ones on TIF, and also downtown redevelopment, um, a lot of good programs are coming out there. And even some, like Panorama to Des Moines, so around the whole Gompontown-sized communities. And then, um, Gary also did one on how to use your city attorney, and also one on due date. So there, there was a lot of good information, and, and Gary didn't stop talking till we got back, so it was good.
Thanks. Any other council comments? Uh, Justin, do you want to address your open house real quick?
Uh, sure. Everybody, uh, is invited. Next Thursday night, we'll have an open house, like we try to do every other year. Uh, last time, if you remember, we put a couple of makeshift rooms out in the, um, street here and, and had to fight the fire, uh, to show how residential sprinklers work. This year, we're moving more towards the, for kids themes. Um, the theme this year is no two ways out of your house. Um, what better timing than, uh, obviously, uh, between the emergency services departments, uh, a couple of, about a week and a half ago, pulling two people out of a burning house. Um, so to reinforce the, uh, start at the little, little kids age, hopefully, and to build as they get older. So, uh, we invite everybody from five-thirty to seven-thirty. Uh, there's food on there, so we know if people are gonna come, whether they really care, if they get into any type of fire education, we know that's, uh, definitely food will bring them in, uh, so we invite everybody to, to bring the families up. And before you get down to what you were saying, but can we get a reminder one more time on the burn ban and some of that? Yeah, today was supposed to be the, uh, today was supposed to be the opening day of allowing further burn ordinance, uh, to allow people to burn. Uh, but due to the burn ban supersedes the burn ordinance, which still creates no open burning, except for recreational fires. Uh, we have several people that are trying to push the issue of recreational fire, and how they are, uh, they're supposed to be in a containment area, but, uh, uh, we're trying to work with everybody that, you know, we had five or six people burn it today. And, uh, regardless, uh, if today was, uh, the opening day or not, the wind conditions definitely did not constitute burning today, so. If you get any questions, have, feel free to give me a shout for, uh, further. The other thing that we may wanna consider on that burning, um, is when the burn ban is lifted, we may wanna consider, um, moving that timeframe this fall, if, if it allows and if weather allows.
I left one, uh, group of people out when I was talking about the incident. Uh, I know Public Works responded immediately to the calls when they had barricades and everything out there last night, too. I think they're very short of, that's, they were, and that's important. That just fills out, uh, when everybody works together. Thank you.
Sorry. Any other council comments? Any public comments for items, uh, in the agenda? Yes?
I'd like to move, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear what you said about the burn ban.
The burn ban, uh, we're still under a burn ban. No open burning.
No open burning?
No open burning.
Until?
Until the ban is lifted.
Uh, what would take to lift?
Substantial rain.
If we have rain, you might as well not burn this year.
There's a good chance.
It's seriously, I've had a big pile that's been there for over a year now. It gets wet. It's not gonna burn. It'll smoke, but it won't burn.
That's coming, coming away, yeah.
That is a coming way, I would face it.
Yes.
If I could burn it in the afternoon, it'd be perfect, and that's it. I mean, don't care. I'm not joking, yeah. It gets wet, it's not gonna.
I have a statement.
It's getting bigger and bigger, is all I can say.
Any other, all we have.
All I was trying to say is, last fall, we cut down twenty-eight Scott pine trees, fifty to fifty-five foot tall, because of the rust. That's what I call the needles turning brown. I got seven that were cut. That's a lot of trees, that's a lot of brush.
Okay, any other public comments? If not, any of the motions going to close session pursuant to ILOQ twenty point one seven three to discuss contract negotiations. Call the roll.
Ray?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Rusty?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Kipba?
Yes.
Mashburn?
Yes.